Welcome to the City of Marshalltown Council Chambers at Town West State Street. Tonight's city council meeting regularly scheduled is for February 11, 2019, and the time is 5:30 PM. We'll call the meeting to order, but first give notice to -- no, let's -- yeah, notice to the public. The mayor and council welcome comment from the public during discussion of the agenda items. You're required to step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit your time to three minutes so that others may be given the opportunity to speak. Speak clearly and direct to comments to the mayor and city council and not to any specific consular. It's at the discretion of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. Those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Cahill?
Here.
Gowdy?
Here.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Lamer?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Weren?
Here.
Good, full house, even though it's snowing like maybe five to six inches tonight. Any mayor, council, or administrator comments?
I would just like to remind people that coming up next week, we do have our charrette process for the downtown master plan, and there will be a press release going out here this week with more specific information about how the public can participate in that. So please stay tuned for that.
Very good. Any other comments? Okay, let's call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move for approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Very good. Carrie, would you read the first one? Okay. Let's call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move for approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Very good. Carrie, would you read the third resolution?
Resolution discontinuing the waiving of residential building permit fees relating to the civil emergency tornado.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Tie goes to Weren, and would you like to address this, too?
Yes, once again, this is very similar, just related to our demolition permit fees, which we have been waiving on both residential and commercial since the tornado. And so we do, again, think that most of the activity is completed at this time. Same thing would apply if somebody wanted to take out a permit. I would not see a problem with that. Many of the remaining demolitions may, in fact, be falling into things that the city's going to be dealing with as well, which would not have that fee associated, so.
Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Very good. Carrie, would you read the third resolution?
Resolution discontinuing the waiving of residential building permit fees relating to the civil emergency of July 19th, the tornado.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Staff comment?
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. I think maybe had a little bit of discussion on this at the last meeting. I apologize, I wasn't able to be there. We have been waiving the residential building permit fees since the tornado for any reconstruction, repairs, or rebuilds from damage that was caused by the tornado. And so it has been now over a six-month period for that, and are proposing that we reinstate those starting March 1st. I think most of the activity, good portion of residential activity, is underway at this point, so.
Could I ask a question, please? If a person wanted to, was waiting until warmer weather, summertime, to do some construction, can they get the permit prior to this cutoff date, even though construction wouldn't be done until July?
Yes, that's a great question. They certainly could apply for a permit before the March 1st date. We generally like to see work commence and begin within a six-month period, so if they know what they're planning to do and want to get that paperwork filed, I would see no problem with that.
Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions? Did the clerk get any public comment or written comment?
I have not received any written comment.
Any public comment here? Roll call.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Very good. Carrie, would you read item number two?
Resolution discontinuing the waiving of demolition permit fees relating to the civil emergency tornado.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Tie goes to Weren, and would you like to address this, too?
Yes, once again, this is very similar, just related to our demolition permit fees, which we have been waiving on both residential and commercial since the tornado. And so we do, again, think that most of the activity is completed at this time. Same thing would apply if somebody wanted to take out a permit. I would not see a problem with that. Many of the remaining demolitions may, in fact, be falling into things that the city's going to be dealing with as well, which would not have that fee associated, so.
Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Very good.
Carrie, would you read the third resolution?
Resolution approving a 2080 agreement with the Marshall County Communications Commission for use of space at 909 South Second Street.
Move for approval?
Second.
Any staff comment?
Yes, this was something that you directed to come back here for this meeting here on February 11th, and there are some revisions to what was originally presented by the Marshall County Communications Commission, including that there would be rent for just a dollar for this first year, but for the fiscal year to start July 1st of 2020, that they would have a share of expenses that we had previously talked about for annual maintenance agreements, cable television services, fiber rent, and electricity charges. This also then basically sets forth that we would be conveying the equipment to them upon the completion of the building, so that it was not something that we would retain responsibility for or ownership of and need to ensure or plan for future repairs and maintenance. And so what is here has been sent to Sheriff Hoffman and to Supervisor Bill Patton as well, and I believe that because it is something different, they will be discussing probably at their monthly meeting here this week as well. So this might not be the final version. I did not receive any changes back when I did send this on Friday or anything, so -- but I would recommend that you approve tonight, and then they will have that in their possession for their meeting this week.
Any questions or discussion? Call the roll, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
No.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Very good. Carrie, would you read the next resolution, please?
Resolution supporting the renovation of the Veterans Memorial Coliseum and the fundraising efforts to complete the project.
Move for approval. Second, Your Honor.
Discussion?
Just that you're -- if I'm remembering the numbers right, about $300,000 is what you're talking about.
We're looking for $1 million in grants, which were -- I have people who have been scouring other sources and identifying new potential sources for me almost on a daily basis, as well as in 350,000 of private donations or fundraisers.
If there aren't any other comments or questions, let's call the roll.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
On to the next item. It looks like this one is a public hearing. Would you read what the resolution is about, please?
Sure. We have a public hearing and a resolution following the public hearing regarding the plan specifications, form of contract, and cost for the manhole and point repair project.
I declare the public hearing open at 5:40 PM. Did you receive any written comments at the clerk's office?
I did not receive any written comments.
Are there any public comments? Seems odd that staff review comes after that, but it's now time for staff review.
Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. The plans and specifications and contract are on file in the city clerk's office. This is for our manhole and point repair project, which is a sanitary sewer project. I believe the engineer's estimate is roughly $3.2 million to be funded with a state revolving fund loan. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the project.
If there are no questions, are there any council comments? And hearing none, I will declare the public hearing is closed at 5:41 PM. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So move. Second.
Who was that? Lamer?
Yes.
And Gowdy?
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
Comments by the council or the public? Call the roll.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Very good. Carrie, would you read the third resolution?
Resolution approving a 2080 agreement with the Marshall County Communications Commission for use of space at 909 South Second Street.
Move for approval?
Second.
Any staff comment?
Yes, this was something that you directed to come back here for this meeting here on February 11th, and there are some revisions to what was originally presented by the Marshall County Communications Commission, including that there would be rent for just a dollar for this first year, but for the fiscal year to start July 1st of 2020, that they would have a share of expenses that we had previously talked about for annual maintenance agreements, cable television services, fiber rent, and electricity charges. This also then basically sets forth that we would be conveying the equipment to them upon the completion of the building, so that it was not something that we would retain responsibility for or ownership of and need to ensure or plan for future repairs and maintenance. And so what is here has been sent to Sheriff Hoffman and to Supervisor Bill Patton as well, and I believe that because it is something different, they will be discussing probably at their monthly meeting here this week as well. So this might not be the final version. I did not receive any changes back when I did send this on Friday or anything, so -- but I would recommend that you approve tonight, and then they will have that in their possession for their meeting this week.
Any questions or discussion? Call the roll, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
No.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Thanks, Justin. Very good. On to the discussion items, the first of which is the follow-up on the Southridge property sale.
Yes, this was something that we talked about at our January 11th meeting, and then -- or I mean, January 14th meeting, excuse me, and then the next day I had our bid notice for the Southridge properties, which was due at noon on Wednesday, and we did not receive any bids. And so based on that, I'm recommending that we move forward with what we were planning to do, which was the plating process and plans to install the new section of South Seventh Avenue in 2019.
Any discussion, questions?
I had a couple of calls from developers that just told me there just wasn't enough time. By the time they hired a consultant and paid him to do all this work prior to the bid, they didn't have time to get it all done, so that's why they were bidding. So take that for a grain of salt or whatever it's worth, but both of them told me the same thing, they just didn't have enough time. I just hope we don't spend a lot of money out there to get this street in when we have an opportunity maybe not to have to spend anymore.
One thing I will remind you is that this is included in what we did borrow for our 2019 street program.
Other questions or suggestions? Public comment?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South Tenth Avenue. I'm just wondering, is there -- what's the state code that's requiring us to put this street in? Is there a state code? I know you don't have to answer, but.
This was something that the council had decided was a public safety priority, and that's the reason for moving forward.
I might add, may, that there are 62 homes, properties there with one ingress and one egress, and it is a public safety concern, and it's been discussed for some time. And this project was a plan to move forward with this. I, too, concur with Councilman Lamer that the timeline really was compressed, and there was a lot of work to be done. It made it much more difficult. But I do think that we need to move ahead on this because of, I think there's an urgency at hand.
Thank you. Other comments or?
I have a question. I thought there was -- wasn't there a rule that after so many houses in a subdivision, there had to be more than one connection? But for some reason, in this one, they had ignored that?
So it was about when development occurred and what was the international fire code that had been adopted by the council at the time. And so what currently exists out there right now could not currently happen in a new subdivision. So it's limited at 30, 30 dwellings, I believe, and so, yes, so what you have right now would not be allowed under current code.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I thought there was a code violation there that we kind of ignored.
It's one of those things about when it happens and what's in place, and so, yes, so -- but that is one of the things that would not be allowed to happen elsewhere, and we've had active conversations with other developers here over the last year about not exceeding that 30-unit mark.
Okay, thank you.
Is it legal to put this out for a rebid? Is that a possibility, or was more time?
My concern about doing that, Councilmember Hoop, is that it's then going to potentially damage our timeline for getting this done in 2019. If indeed we do allow -- I don't know how much more time would be needed than three weeks from this point. If you would need, you know, upwards of six to eight weeks, then that's eating into our, you know, design time and bidding season as well. And so that's a concern at this point, and that was my concern initially when we had this conversation, was that if we didn't receive any bids, that we, as the city, would still have enough time to complete this project in calendar year 2019.
Other comments? I think the memo asked for staff direction on this one.
Yes, that if there could be a motion with, basically a motion directing staff to proceed with the plating process and the plans to install the new section of South Seventh Avenue in 2019.
Is there such a motion?
Your Honor? Yes, I would so move.
Thank you.
Second.
Any -- what do you want further discussion?
This has to do, as I understand it, again, with the plating, just the plating, and of course, directing staff to move forward on that phase.
And with the design of the street, that's going to be something that we will have to have done externally, and I believe it has to be done externally at this point. And so that would be something that we'd want to get an engineering firm under contract to complete that design, so that we could get it out to bid.
Yep.
So is the motion to direct staff to proceed with plating? Was there more to that motion?
What I requested was the plating process and plans to install the new section of South Seventh Avenue.
Yes.
You're okay with that, Mr. Martin?
Yes, that's more complete.
Second, okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Well, let's call the roll.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
Discussion item number two is a review of the 2019-20 strategic plan.
Yes, there is really only one area that I want to focus on this. I do believe that what's in your packet is a very good first draft, and it's something that I think as you all read it, we can each find those areas where we all contributed. I do just want to highlight again, because I think we just need to keep saying it so we remember it, but that our mission is that the City of Marshalltown collaborates to provide a welcoming, safe, vibrant, and growing community. And I think that's still, even, you know, three months later, still adequately describes what we're looking for. So the one area that was just really sort of troubling as I was going back through things was looking at the goal number two, which goal number two, to remind you, is to enhance Marshalltown's public image. One of the areas where there was a lot of feedback from the actual, our day process was related to the marketing of the community and basically this larger sort of community communications. And it was really sort of confusing as I worked through this in terms of trying to figure out what it was exactly that we wanted to do. And so that's where I just sort of outlined the bigger questions to get an answer of, you know, should the city be the entity doing the public relations and marketing of the community? And was that really the path that you wanted to go down? Or was it more that we should be contributing funds to other entities to support the marketing of the community, or that we should be just generally supporting with staff and mayor and council, you know, assisting in any way we can to another entity? And so I just really would like some better direction, because I think this is that kind of that one piece unless you all have something to sort of finalize before -- or to finalize in order to then move the strategic plan forward.
Any comment or discussion about that?
I did have a comment. I know that your questions in your memo about, again, whether the city should be hiring someone to do public relations or be the entity doing the public relations ourselves. And I'm not sure I feel that's a good fit for our staff. I think one of the things that we talked about and in our budgetary process was that we look to reduce some funding to our Convention and Visitors Bureau, and I think that that would be an area that we could increase funding back to them with the understanding that part of those funds are not only spent on their mission, but having some of that marketing plan. I think we have several entities in town, whether it's Vision, Marshalltown, Convention and Visitors Bureau, Chamber of Commerce, that do this type of thing, and I think we should take advantage of their skills and not recreate the wheel and put additional funds from the city personnel aspect into that. I think that we could contribute funds to existing entities that are already doing that work.
That's what I thought, too, when I saw that about the CBB and just that we probably don't need to be looking at -- well, and I was thinking of the CBB specifically because that was in the memo, but instead of cutting what we were or changing the percentage down, we could at least keep it the same and put this goal in. They probably have a similar goal if we thought about it, but, yeah, I agree.
There's no question that Vision, Marshalltown has it as one of the three main prongs to promote, and there has been some talk of funding through the Thai Foundation for getting professional help with that, too, and there are a couple of us up here that are on that, and it's got a really good group of people that have some talents in that marketing area. Do you feel comfortable you have?
I was going to say, if that's kind of generally, if the consensus of, you know, looking at using an outside organization to do the work and looking to use hotel motel tax funds to accomplish that, then I think we can, yeah, we can work within those parameters. And then I just, I'm open for any other comments or questions you might have about the document that's before you.
Jessica, I'm not certain we're saying hire an outside entity to do public relations or enhance the image. I think we've got at hand in the community those folks and those organizations who do a really good job. I know we've got to look at funding overall, and that's a problem, but I think, Sue Cahill said it succinctly of what I think our intent is and our feeling is, if others want to weigh in, we've got the tools at hand, I believe, without any, either outside financing or taking on a special effort as a council.
I would repeat that our goal of collaborating with other entities, that, to me, steers us to say, let's work with those people who also share that goal with us, and let's work in tandem so that we're getting out the same message and that our message is unified as we share that with others outside of our community and within our community, so that we're getting one message across instead of four or five different messages out there.
Unless anybody else has any comments on that topic, let's go on to the next one. And that is?
It's our budget. We have fiscal year 2020. There's three sections. Special revenue funds, capital funds, and debt service fund.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. First, we're going to start off talking about special revenues funds. So these include donations restricted for a particular purpose, grants, and other property tax levies. So at the last meeting on February 4th, I discussed the Fund 110, the road use tax, 112 employee benefit, 117 police and fire retirement, and 119 emergency levy. So tonight, I'm going to talk about the remaining special revenue funds. So in the show here are cash balances, and over here, by the fund name, I kind of put in what is going through there for your understanding. So we'll start out with the local option sales tax. So in fiscal year 20, we're projecting a revenue of $3.1 million. Of this, 78% will then be allocated for property tax relief, so that is $2,418,000. And then the remaining 22% is for council-designated purposes, so that brings in $682,000. At the last meeting, you also wanted me to apply $110,000 of council-designated dollars to buy down the levy. And then we also talked about using $390,000 for the property tax relief fund balance to also buy down the levy. So council-designated funds can be used for any lawful purpose, so looking forward for things that we haven't already identified. This could be used to reimburse FEMA costs that we don't get paid for. We can be funding the backfill if that doesn't go through the legislature. For FY '21, we know we're going to have a loss of property tax valuations, so this could help make up the backfill. So again, this is council-designated, but it is one pot of money, and once it's spent, it's gone. So the other items in fiscal year 20 that you've already decided to spend it on is $50,000 for cash flow reserve. You wanted me to cover the general fund deficit, which ended up being $11,266. We wanted to pay the ADA transition plan, half of it in FY '19 and half of it in '20. So FY '20 share is $60,500. And then the other item that's running through the local option sales tax is the construction of streets. So prior to the vote a few years ago, when citizens decided to use the 78% and 22% split, at that time, it was 75% for property tax relief, 20% for construction, and 5% for council-designated. So the streets are So the streets are coming out of that balance, that 20% balance that we just haven't spent yet. So any questions on the local option sales tax? Okay, we'll move on to the tax increment financing. So back in November, I brought you the report for the certification. So this gets spent for development agreements, transfers in for TIF-related debt payments, and construction projects. So for the property tax, we're estimating $636,000 being brought in for this. This also relates to the next fund, TIF LMI, so same certification that I just talked about. This will bring in, this will bring in funds for local to, I'm sorry, low to moderate income projects. The current certification percentage is 41.79%, so that's kept by the city for those development projects. Fund 130, city tort liability. So this is for our general liability insurance claims. So when we have a claim, we pay the expense out of there, and then if we get refunded by the insurance company, it comes back in. Fund 132, the grants. This is helping fund the downtown master plan at $100,000, Diablo River Trail at $50,000, Third Avenue Corridor $25,000, and Wefinding at $50,000. Martha Allentai is a, is a big contributor of this fund. Fund 140 is the park and rec donation funds, helps with park shelters, equipment, benches, and trees. The next several items are basically a pass-through. We pay out the expenses, and then we get reimbursed from these agencies, so the Marshalltown Tennis Association, Softball Association, and Live Healthy Iowa. You see, Fund 145 is our tornado fund, so we started accumulating costs in there as we had to pay bills. The insurance company is reimbursing us for the city's own property and equipment, and the rest we're going to be submitting to FEMA. There is a match, 15% match required for FEMA, and so we are hoping to utilize the volunteer hours to pay for that, to account for that. If that doesn't come through, then we'll be out the money, so we'll need to cover that. Funds 150 through 157, 170 and 177 are all grants related to different departments. Those are pretty self-explanatory. Funds 160 and 161 are related to economic development. Funds 179 through 189 relate to various housing grants. So again, we were awarded the LED grant this year, so they should be starting this spring sometime, so we put that one back on the books. So the LED grant, it is reimbursement basis. So we put out the money, we submit our claim, we get reimbursed. The Section 8 housing, that one, the money comes in to us upfront, and then we pay out. And then the 911 surcharge, that is just a payment that came in in July, so we'll be turning that over to the county from the surcharge fee. So there's no more activity at all in '20. Any questions on any of these? So again, because some are reimbursement-based and some we have to spend and then get reimbursed, that's why some of the fund balances are negative. I will go on to the next topic.
Please do.
The next one is the capitals projects. So these are used for large construction projects such as bike trails, streets, parks, airports, et cetera. The revenue stream for these projects are donation grants and borrowed funds. And it's just kind of recapping when you reviewed the C I P, the Capital Improvement Plan, that we now put the costs in particular funds. So we will start with Fund 300. So on our levy sheet, we, we levy the maximum of $67.5 cents per thousand of taxable valuations, and this helps pay for our equipment and larger items that depart, that departments are requesting. So the revenue comes in here that we levy, and then we move it over as needed to the general fund for the projects that you already approved. A lot of these are self-explanatory, so I won't stand here and read all of them, but I will bring you down to Fund 354, the police and fire station. You will notice that we do not have any expenses for fiscal year 20, we're just expending, spending out the rest in fiscal year 19. Now, does that mean we're gonna come in at zero? No. You know, we still expect to be probably around $1 million left over, but not knowing how things are gonna play out the rest of the year, we just went ahead and spent it, showed it as being spent. 355 is our dangerous and dilapidated program. We did move over the $478,000 that you directed me to for the solid waste management fees. Are there any other questions on any of these funds? Moving on. We'll go to the debt service fund. So this is the schedule that I brought to you, the first meeting in January. I talked about all the debt that we had, and some of it is paid out of TIF or the enterprise funds, and that's in this column, and then the remainder is paid with the debt service levy. So down here, when I talked about the local option sales tax, I said that the current revenue coming in of $3.1 million, 78% is allocated to property tax relief, so that's the $2.4 million that we're reducing this levy by. And then the, another $390,000 from the fund balance of the property tax relief, and then you wanted an additional $110,000. So that's all on the sheet spelled out. The fund balance in there would be 100, is projecting $179,000. This net budget increase is due to the backfill and some interest income. Again, not knowing whether we will get the backfill during the legislative session, we're just not showing it as being used at this point in time. So if there's no questions about this, I just wanna give you a reminder of what's coming up. So at the February 26 meeting, I will have all the official budget reports finalized, and then you can review it and set the public hearing date. March 1st, the report will be printed in the TR, the notification will be printed in the TR. On March 11th, we'll have the public hearing. You'll adopt the budget. Any changes that you want made, I will make, and then send them to the county by March 15th. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Onto the public comment. I swear I'm gonna take some time and cut this down someday. Members of the public may make comments on any item that was not on the agenda during this time. You must approach the microphone, state your name and address. Limit the comments to three minutes unless longer comment is authorized by me. The speaker shall direct comments to the mayor and council as a whole. Mayor and consellers shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public, and no action may be taken on items raised in public comments in order to comply with the open meetings laws. And it's gonna be hard to cut that down, actually. Anyway, if there is any public, now is the time to approach the microphone, uh, public comment. Now's the time to approach the microphone. I guess we allow staff and consellers to comment in this time as well.
And they can talk as long as they want. Oh, I'm out of order.
You're out of order, because you're not at the microphone stating your name and address.
Everyone knows the name.
We got you, and everybody walked in the door. I will say that. Okay, we are adjourned at 6:10.